All right, we'll go ahead and call this evening to order. Welcome to tonight's county commissioner meeting. The invocation tonight, I'm gonna ask Mr. Michael Scott, if you would, might ask him to ask the invocation tonight. Come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain, and to all the other commissioners. Thank you for the privilege and opportunity to come and share with you. My being here is an indirect result of my wife speaking at the Martin Luther King Junior Prayer Breakfast back in January. And something that she said kind of sparked some interest in quite a few people, and somehow or another it worked out that I be here today, so I'm appreciative of that. I want to share a quote with you before I pray here and give the invocation. It comes from Martin Luther King, and he said, "People fail to get along because they fear each other. They fear each other because they don't know each other. They don't know each other because they have not communicated with each other." And so I believe and I pray that this will be the beginning of, start of communicating with us together across denominational lines against racial lines, against all kinds of lines that we've allowed to divide us, so that we can do what is right, and we can make, you all as commissioners, you as trusted servants, can make those decisions that will benefit the community as a whole, because I really believe that's what you want to do. So let us just bow for a moment. God of all creation, on behalf of each county commissioner, department head, and presenter here tonight, as trusted servants of our community, we seek your blessings on the deliberations on the matters at hand here. We pray that as they have determined to meet tonight, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter placed on the agenda, and always act in accordance to what is best for our community and fellow citizens, and to promote the common good. May they recognize their responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of all citizens living in this great county we call home. impart your supreme wisdom upon their activities, so that their affairs tonight may reach a successful conclusion. We ask that in our neighborhoods and our communities where there are divisions, show us how healing can begin, and let there be peace. Show us how the beauty of unity can thrive even in the midst of diversity. Let this present moment in time be a continuation of the intentional action of our hearts and hands to cross over the lines that we have allowed to create unnecessary division among us, and for too long now have caused us to fail to see that there are more similarities in all of us than differences. This we ask in your matchless name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Scott. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for Eastside Volunteer Fire Department to receive approval for a tax-exempt loan. I'd invite Mr. --
We need to approve the agenda.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Got ahead of myself. I was excited. I need to seek approval of the agenda with the addition of an item that's been placed on the table up here. It is an agreement providing supplemental law enforcement services to the town of Baden. What's the pleasure of the board?
My motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Is that the consent agenda? You want that in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Lawhan to place that item in the consent agenda as item H. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Almond. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, now item one. Sorry about that, Mr. Center.
It's all right. Good evening. How are y'all doing? I'm here tonight on behalf of Eastside Volunteer Fire Department. They are requesting, as you said, tax-exempt financing for the construction of a new station. As you know, I guess Eastside Fire Department has in the past, they've had two stations, one there in Albemarle, there at Layton Road, and then another out on 2427. Due to the roadwork that is going on along 2427, their existing department or station has, or is gonna be no longer useful. So they, I guess back in 2016, did purchase about 16 acres right beside the existing site, and plan to obviously do a build there and have a new station. The construction, I think the construction plans were in your packet, and U.R.A. Bank has approved the loan request, and there's also a loan commitment letter there that does include the rate that would be offered, assuming you approve the tax-exempt status. But really, at this time, I guess we're here to answer any questions you have. I do have a couple members of the department, but we are requesting hopefully that you will approve that.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board before we open the public hearing? All right, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the proposed package? Or against? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this project be approved, and the commitment from U.R.A. Bank be set.
Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number two on tonight's agenda is gonna be the proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Ms. Dolly Clayton.
Good evening. Chair, I've come to you tonight to request your approval of the proclamation that I included, that was included in your packet. So April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and our goal is to use the pinwheel as a symbol of childhood to sort of transform awareness into action by creating conversations about our responsibility as adults to ensure that all children grow up in a safe and nurturing homes and communities that foster their healthy growth and development. Strong nurturing communities that are supportive of families, that can get involved and play a role in preventing child abuse and neglect, and therefore promote child and family well-being. Traditionally, our child maltreatment prevention and intervention strategies have focused exclusively on the risk factors and their elimination. But we now know that changing the balance between risk and protective factors, so that the protective factors can outweigh the risk factors, is a more effective prevention and intervention strategy. I'm requesting that you approve the proclamation that I'd like to read for you for April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets, whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities that they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge, and parenting development, child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure that all children grow to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of the partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and now therefore, I'm hoping that you'll say "we," the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, to hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. I'm requesting your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Any discussion, questions from the board? All right, what's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt April 2019 Child Abuse Prevention Month as an enclosed proclamation.
Motion by Commissioner Almond, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farr. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So if you remember last month, you passed a proclamation of March as Social Work Month. And so I want to extend an invitation that I sent to you by email there this Thursday on the 21st at 8:30 a.m. in the DSS auditorium. I hope you'll come to our Social Work Month appreciation event. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda tonight is a presentation from Commissioner Barbie.
Thank you, Chairman Swain. A few days ago, maybe a week and a half ago, a friend of mine, Reverend Mitchell Cook, contacted me about his concern for the opioid crisis, and I'm gonna let him introduce our speaker, because I got to talk to him by phone, just made him here previously before the meeting, and I would love for Reverend Cook to come up and present him there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. We appreciate the time that we have to come before you tonight. I've been pastor in church for 44 years here in Stanley County, been preaching for about 50 years, and Stanley County is my home. I was born and raised in Stanley County. And when this news came on TV, and our county was the number-one opioid addiction in this state, we sat and we talked about it, and we talked about it at our church, and I've talked about it to several of our leaders of our community, and there's no need to talk about it, it's time for somebody to step up. And so the Lord laid it on my heart to do that, and I met Brother Jamie Torres through our prison ministry. I'm on the board, the CRC Board, at the Stanley County prisons at Palestine, and he does the prison ministry, and I asked him if he would come and help us. He knows about the situation, he's aware of it, he's been in it in prison, and been in it all his life, and God's delivered him, saved him from that. I have a poster that I like to give to each one of you. We felt led of the Lord to start a ministry here in the county for four different days, three different days, and that's April the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th, which will be on a Sunday. We didn't have anywhere to go, and I probably got the biggest facility probably of any of us that's interested in doing it. Our church has seats 280, comfortable, and we can set some seats out. So we had to have a place to start somewhere, so I just said we'd do it at our church. We got a facility that Brother Jamie can stay there, and it'll limit some of the expense of it. But we wanted to come before you and ask you if you would help us, and your support. Everybody that you got to help stand with you in a time like this to preach against the devil and all of his imps of hell, you gotta have all the support you can have. So I came to Brother Mike, and he asked me about coming and speaking to you, and I got Brother Jamie, he drove from Morganton down here to talk to you tonight, and I'm gonna let him do that. But I'd like to give you one of these posters that we made, and we're gonna place them wherever we can here in the county, and we promise you we'll go back and take them down. We won't leave them up to dirty up a person's business. But if I may, I'd like to give you one of them, and I'd like to introduce you to him, Brother Jamie Torres Ministry. He'll be coming and preaching for us, and I'd like for him to come, and I'll come and give you one of these posters while he comes. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm just amazed. First of all, I love your bow tie, sir.
Thank you.
I'm amazed. I was sitting here, and I was wondering what in the world is a Puerto Rican from the Bronx? What is he doing in a place called Albemarle, North Carolina? You know, it's amazing when you surrender your life to God and allow Him to lead you. And I believe with all my heart He has led me here to this county. I live, my name is Jamie Torres, and I live in Morganton, North Carolina, and I speak all over, all over the world. I go internationally. The Lord has opened great doors. I've been out of prison 18 years. I was practically raised in prison, learned how to read in prison, got my GED in prison. I thank God for my prison experience. I'm not ashamed. I would be ashamed if I would be the same man that I was before, but in federal penitentiary, I saw my first Bible ever. I come from a broken home, my mother and father, Puerto Ricans, but my father abandoned me when I was a little baby, and my mama was heartbroken, and next thing I know, I was about six months, I don't remember, but I know we ended up in the Bronx, New York, and my mother, she remarried, her husband, my stepdad was an alcoholic, very abusive man. Real poor, we thank God that we was raised on, I was raised on potted meat and Vienna sausages, food stamps. That's how I was raised, me and my, and my four siblings. We lived in one bedroom apartment, we slept on a cot, and we watched the New York Yankees and the New York Mets with an old TV with a bunch of hangers as antenna. Never had a positive figure, a father figure in my life, never, didn't know nothing about prayer, didn't know nothing about religion, never seen, never seen my mother praying, never had nobody pray over me. So it was that kind of a lifestyle, and soon after that, I got involved in gangs and looking to fit in, you know, just looking to fit in. And I love, I love my homies, my gang, they accepted me for who I was, they couldn't care less if I was Spanish, or black, or white, they just loved me. And I did anything just to earn their love and to be affirmed. And shortly after that, my mother was afraid they were gonna kill me, so she sent me to Puerto Rico, to my grandmama, and that's why I met my real dad. And now when I met my real dad, you would think, you know, and I, you know, I did feel wow, you know, but come to find out, he was a drug dealer, and the first thing he did, he used me as a courier. I was nothing but 14 years old, and so that's the kind of lifestyle that I was accustomed to. And I was very spectacle people. I felt that when they was nice to you, they wanted to, they wanted something. And I didn't know what love was, and it was just what you can do for me. Back in 1990, I got arrested, and they gave me a life sentence in the federal penitentiary for trafficking cocaine. But before that, I was addicted to drugs, and I just had a hole. I mean, I just, I wanted to fit in, and, you know, been rejected all my life, and, you know, when I came to this country, you know, I was bullied a lot, you know, by a lot of people, you know, because we was different, you know, from another country, and so. But in 1990, I got arrested, and I thought I was gonna get out on bond, never did, denied my bond because I was a habitual felon three times. And I went to trial and lost, and they gave me, for my life sentence, they gave me 25 years. Best thing ever happened to me. The Lord humbled me, I was broken, and the Lord used a young black man that was already incarcerated with a 25-year sentence, and he was the instrument that God used to speak the word of God to me. I wrote something quickly, and let me say something. I appreciate you, public servants. I appreciate the calling of God in your life, you know, and as a community, you know, it takes a village, man, you know, it does. We've been given a charge, all of us, and I appreciate you. I appreciate the fact that, like I said, I don't, you know, what am I doing here? I'm just trying to be obedient to God, man, you know? I go to 15 prisons right now. This morning, I did a graduation at Foothills, that's a state prison in Morganton. I did a graduation this morning. I graduated about 35 gang members. They got a special program in Foothills, they send all the gang members of the state of North Carolina, they send them there to do a nine-month program if they want their custody, Lord. And so I go, I come here once a month to Albemarle, drive two hours and a half, I've been doing it for years. I go to Lincoln Town, all the prisons. That's, that's my heart. I was born in prison, born again, and I, you know, I feel like that that's where I need to be at. I need to go out there and, and bring, you know, hope. I got a slogan in my ministry, "From slinging dope to slinging hope." That's what, you know, and I can't do it by myself, I gotta do it with you. But let me write, I wrote something early this morning, I've been up since 6:00, and just wanna read something to you real quick, just gonna take a couple minutes. Addiction is a debilitating disease. The journey towards lifelong recovery is difficult. Few people can achieve sobriety on their own, and many people turn to God for help. The Bible says that God is always with us if we have faith in Him. He'll help us when we are weak. He'll forgive our sins and heal our hearts, but many people isolate themselves while they are suffering from drug addiction. They hide from friends and family members, and they distance themselves from God. It's only when they renew their relationship with God that they find motivation to commit to recovery. Many people in recovery says that the turning point in their life was when they surrendered themselves to God. Those experiences are proof of the scriptures that God will heal us when we turn to Him. Listen, I don't shove religion down nobody's throat, I don't believe in that. I believe you just meet people where they at. You love people, you relate to people, and then if you get a chance, if they ask you, you know, you slip in there and slip on out. You slip Jesus, slip on out, you know? And I believe that there's a scripture that is so powerful to me personally, it says, "Taste and see that the Lord is good." And I want people, when they come in contact with Jamie, I want them to taste, it says something different about this man. I want, I want to create an appetite in them, I want to create an appetite, so that whatever was hurting them, whatever was bothering them, just like one day, I was crushed. And you would think that prison, see, prison is meant to punish you, to, you lose your freedom. But in actuality, I found my freedom in this little cell. He started a healing process. I was following the lies. I thought that the white man was my problem, my enemy, the police, bunch of lies, until I got in my Facebook, the Bible with my Facebook, and in the mirror, and then the Lord started revealing truth to me. And I said, "Oh, my God, what was I thinking?" And then that truth started cleaning my thought pattern, and it started changing the way I think. And today, by the grace of God, I consider myself a success. Why? Because 18 years, man, and that's what I do is just, I go wherever God sent me. Look where I'm at today. You would never think that a Puerto Rican on his way to hell with no destiny, no future, today I'd be standing in front of a distinguished panel like this, and I don't take this for granted. Please help me as I come to Albemarle. You know, I don't know, hey, the Bible says, "We walk by faith, not by sight." I'm not called to understand, I just wanna be obedient. And if we can touch one soul at a time, we can do that, man. You know, and I know we turn the TV and we hear kind of nonsense about our country. Like I'm a flag, I wear it proudly, I'm American, this is all the country I know. I love my country, we not a perfect country, but I love my country, love my country, pray for my country, you know? I pray for my president. I don't talk about nothing negative, I don't wanna hear none of that. You know, I want healing, I want healing, I want restoration for our country. So many beautiful things here, you know, but it takes a village. It takes you, it takes me, you know, so thank you. Help me. If you know somebody who are dope, or a family that are struggling, you know, invite them to Pastor Cook's church. Invite them, you know, and I don't care, I like to sit down and meet and talk, and I wanna be available. That's what I wanna be. It's not about having all the abilities, it's being available. So if you know anybody, you know, this drug thing is really, is a nuisance, it's hurting the fabric of our nation, families, especially our young people, which, my humble opinion, is the greatest asset that we have in this country. It's our people, our young people, you know, and so that's our future, and we need to And so thank you, and pray for me. You know, I believe that God is gonna open more doors for me, and, you know, as you go to different levels, you know that, bigger level, bigger devils. You feel me? As you going up the ladder and answering the call, you're gonna be attacked. And I heard about you, sir, I salute you, sir. I think you, yeah, you heard about, what did you hear? Heard you shot a computer.
Oh, yeah.
But now, you my kinda dude, you my kinda man. God bless you. Thank you for having me, and thank you for your love. And let's, let's make this county, this is a great county, right? I come to, I've been here about four or five times. As a matter of fact, I didn't know about Pastor Scott. I preached at his church, but when was it, sir?
June.
June, right? And I didn't know you were gonna be here. And then Pastor Matley, another pastor, I preached at his church. We did an outside event, a lot of people came, told my testimony. I got shot six times in my chest, was in a coma for a month and a half in Savannah, Georgia. A month and a half in coma, man, I woke up, and then you would think I would, I would do the right thing, but I moved my operation to Florida, and I got my cut, my neck cut from here, over 200 stitches, survived that. As I look back, I understand why the Lord preserved me, not because I'm a special, but because He knew that I was gonna meet you today. He knew, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna thank you personally, you kept me alive because of my destiny, because God called me for my mama's womb. He knew, it was written in heaven, that I was gonna be standing in front of you, I promised to God. That's why He saved me. And I'm fearful right now, my heart, I want so desperately honor God. I waited so many years, and today God has given me a new life, He said, "Now don't you give back." That's why I'm alive today, because He beat me, and I thank you. I thank God that today I didn't know nothing about Albemarle, I didn't know nothing, but He knew. And back then, when I deserved nothing but hearing death, He preserved me for such a time as this today. So help me, let's work together, we can snatch it from the fire. I've been there, I know what it is to be on that. I've been there, I know what it is to be on that dope. I know what it is to have a hole, oh. I know what it is to feel insignificant. I know what it is not to feel valued. I know what it is to be rejected and kicked around. But I also know what it is when you meet a real God, a living God, and He makes the difference in our life, not by preaching, but by living. May God bless you, may God keep you and bless your family. And let's sock it to that devil. Let's sock it to those people bringing drugs to our nation. Let's sock it. We can do it. If God can save a wretched man like me, no education, on my way to hell, He will do it to anybody. Thank you, love. And my man, I like, you got that swag, see? You got that swag.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Thank you, Reverend Cook.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, come on.
I was kind of nervous when I come up here, but I said we'd have it at our church. It's not a denominational thing. It's all about soul, it's all about people. And I don't know where it's gonna go. If it gets big, we may have to have the Aggressivic Center or something. And we just got it scheduled for those four days. But, you know, if we get, people get saved and their lives changed, and it gets bigger, and I hope it does, I hope we can turn this thing around and make a difference in this county. And if we can do that, and we can get that, I don't know the availability, I don't know what we have to do to get it, but whatever we need to do, I'm willing to do it. I'm not just talking from my mouth, I'm talking from my heart, and I want to see it changed. And I appreciate your help, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cook. Questions from the board? Mr. Barbe?
Thank you, Reverend Cook. Thank you, Jamie Torres. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to item number four. The presenter's, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our ABC director is actually in Oakboro attending their meeting tonight. They're also holding a public hearing on this same item. This is a public hearing for an existing business that will be adding new taxable investment and creating 18 new jobs in Oakboro. I'm asking the board to hold the public hearing this evening for a five-year tax incentive grant. The tax incentive percentage will be 55% for the new additional taxable investment that the company invests, which is proposed to be $1 million. So I'd ask the board to hold that public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the county manager before we open the public hearing? I declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against Project Canon Tax Incentive? Or against? All right, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a five-year tax incentive grant associated with a proposed new taxable investment above and beyond the company's existing tax base 55%.
Motion by Commissioner Almond, second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion on that? None? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, number five on the agenda tonight is the Nursing Home Advisory Committee appointment. Again, presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have this item in your packet. Ms. Tice, who's the regional abudman with the Central Island Council of Governments, has requested current board members Lane Peeler and Melton Mullinex Jr. be reappointed to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending March of 2020, 2022, excuse me. And both have agreed to serve again if reappointed. Their information, I believe, is in your packet. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Lane Peeler and Melton Bill Mullenix Jr. to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending March 2022.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Lohan to appoint Lane Peeler and Melton Mullinex Jr. to the Nursing Home Advisory Board for a term of three years ending March of 2022. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. And that brings us to our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board tonight? Motion by Commissioner Almond to accept the consent agenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Barbie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, I had a few people signed up on public comment, but I think both of those were the gentlemen that already spoke to us on an agenda item. So that brings us, is there anybody else that wants to speak tonight? No? Good chance. All right, we'll go to board comments. We'll start down here with Commissioner Farr tonight.
Well, I was gonna say, I really appreciated Reverend Cook coming in and Jamie Torres' testimonial that appears they've left. I really appreciate what they do. Second of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate for all the fire department for what they're doing, and maybe we can help them get some equipment so they can do their job more professional. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Commissioner Almond?
I'd just like to echo Commissioner Farr's remarks in regards to Jamie Torres and Preacher Cook. A few weeks ago, I went to an event hosted by Lee Park and Anderson Grove Church, and they're also addressing the same issue with their ministries. I think it's really good what folks are doing in our community to try to help those who are suffering from opioid crisis.
Mr. Morgan, do you have anything tonight? Mr. Lohan? Mr. Jordan?
I just want to take a second and let the public at large know it's not on our agenda yet, it is on our agenda at the Board of Health. We've been talking about Stanley County Home Health and what to do with the future of it and the challenges that it's facing. And we have, I was talking to somebody today that reminded me, and I wanted to say this, and I wish the room was full of people, but just some information from the general public helps spur some questions, which helps spur some conversation, which helps spur new creative ideas. Just a couple Facebook comments is all it took, and people started thinking in a different way. And so, you know, we don't have any answers yet, we're still working, we're gonna still be working for a while. But all the people involved, the Health Department, DSS, Board of Health, everybody, they're working hard, and they're trying to come up with a solution. I'm hoping that that board will have something to give this board in the near future in terms of recommendation, just some information.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Barbie?
I also like to thank Reverend Cook and Mr. Jamie Torres for coming in and addressing the opioid crisis. And I think if the churches sort of address it, I think you're gonna see a big turnaround. So I appreciate everything they're doing. I did owe Mr. Jordan's comment about the home health services, and hopefully we work out a situation that will fit everything everybody's need on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any comments tonight. County staff, anything? All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Almond, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor, please say aye. Meeting's adjourned.